Tuesday, September 9th, 2020 at 6:15 pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we'll post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. If we could please all rise and and for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, we're missing Mr. Dede. Carl, can you lead us in the pledge today?
He's muted, Doug.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Nation under God. And liberty and justice for all. Now, we just got to find Joe. And there he is. Joe, you with us now?
Hey, there you are.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, how you been?
I'm great. Long time no see.
How was the holiday? Good?
Ah, fantastic.
Hey, even Russ is here. Look at him smile. Look at that.
Gang's all here. Okay, first order of business is public comments.
This is nobody much.
If anybody has anything that they'd like to address to the Board of Selectmen, now is your opportunity. If you could state your name and address for the record and can have your chance.
Yeah, Joe Dede, 258 Feeding Hills Road, Southwick, Mass. Hey, is this going to end up like the last planning board meeting or are we going to have a civil meeting? Just Chris asked me ahead of time.
We will try to maintain the regular level of decorum that we always maintain on the Select Board here. Mr. Dede?
Well, I can promise you, your vice chair won't shit all over you. We're good.
They actually did okay considering
They did, they did.
How bad that could have gone.
They did a great job. It's just disappointing that it went that direction. But so what happens when you leave a board, right, Doug? You can only do so much with your flock, only so much with your flock.
I tried to train them as best I could, but they were 80-plus deep on the Zoom there on that meeting. That is a new town record.
It is.
For a non-event.
Yes.
So
All right.
Seeing how it's 6:15, we are supposed to have a classification hearing. And Mr. Steinhardt for the, I'm going to read the public notice, correct?
Yes, you are, because as Town Council suggested, because we're waiting for certain information, that you would open and continue the hearing to a date certain and no other discussion other than the fact that it relates to the email that the assessors gave us on the Form 504 from Mass D O R has to be finalized and then we'll be able to reconvene the hearing and address everything else.
Very good. Do you have a date certain that we want to try to target now?
Well, we certainly could go to your, what we could do is just, just continue it to next Tuesday, October 6th at 6 o'clock. Cindy, Cindy, is there anything that conflicts with that on our meeting schedule for next week?
No, there's not.
So we're good.
Well, and I just wanted to have that for a week. So Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 29th, 2020 at 6:15 in a virtual hearing format permitted by the Governor's emergency orders to decide whether or not all classes of property should be taxed at the same rate for fiscal year 21. Interested taxpayers may attend the hearing through the Zoom reservation details and present oral testimony or submit written information on their views to see Pendleton at Southwickma.net or mail to Select Board Office, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. 01077. Doug Mogul, Chairman, Joe Dede, Vice Chairman, Russell Fox, Clerk, Select Board.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, at this point, there's been no written testimony received.
Okay, well, I'm going to immediately ask for someone to move to continue this hearing till October 6th at 2020 at 6 o'clock PM.
So move.
Box will second.
Doug Mogul votes yes.
Joe Dede, yes.
Russ Fox, yes.
Great. And we will post a new Zoom link for that meeting, correct? Are we going to reuse the same? Do we have to reuse the same one? No, it's continuation, so we can post a new one.
Because you've already called people to this hearing and you've opened it and continued it.
Correct. All right, so we've got a couple of minutes now. Like, no, we don't. We're right on schedule. Lieutenant Landis here. There he is. Do we have a new title for Lieutenant Landis? Can we call him like about to be Chief Landis?
Call me anything, I guess, at this point.
What is that?
Call me anything.
Just not late for dinner.
That's it.
Lieutenant. Civil fingerprinting.
Right. So what we're looking to is have a vehicle here that we can have all our applicants for various licenses, liquor licenses. It could be whomever you seem fit from solicitors, hawkers, peddlers, marijuana dispensary, ice cream truck vendors, which is part of the statute, but for them to supply us with a set of fingerprints and so that we can do a thorough background check through the FBI database. But we must establish a local bylaw ordinance to do that. So that's what this whole thing is about. We've been in the works for quite some time now with the council.
So the ice cream man is right up there with a hawker, peddler, marijuana dealer.
Right up there. He's actually the only one that has this particular statue related to the ice cream truck vendor.
I already have to do it, yeah.
So what is the, what does the new local law do?
Well, what it established is it's a town bylaw which puts in place a process for which we can require all these applicants to pay a monetary to the town. And we submit this to the state police, who in turn also submits it to the FBI database. So unlike the basic query checks that's done at Town Hall, that only gives you minimal information as it relates to Massachusetts, you could see if this person was in, is, you know, had been in trouble in other states. So then if the board is so inclined, can determine if they're suitable to hold a license. Many towns have adopted this. The one that actually attorney coil that came across is similar to the ones I found, but Brookline Police Department and the town of Brookline have a very thorough process, all of which in the end needs to be accepted by the Attorney General's office if we adopt this.
This would also have to go to a town meeting.
Yes.
Yes. Yep, meeting then AG's office.
Correct.
So what the lieutenant's looking for is for your, before you had agreed in principle to pursue this, you've had this document example from the town of Brookline for a couple of weeks. And if you're okay with it in principle, then the lieutenant and I could work with Town Council to have this produced in a proposed general bylaw for the town of Southwick that you could review and then mark up for a future special or annual town meeting.
Russ, Joe?
I have a couple of, couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. First of all, is the fee? Fees are supposed to cover just the actual cost. What do we currently charge, Bob?
Actually, Cindy, maybe you'll answer that question?
Nothing, if I could do it. If they're from another state, they usually have to provide it to me and they pay whatever the state charges.
So
Now, we don't charge anything.
Right. Mr. Fox, also, they, not only would they provide a fee to us, but there is a nominal fee to the state as well that's addressed in the process. And that's for their quarry check. But to the town, it's $50. That's at least what Brookline established.
Is it once a year?
Yes, it's, the licenses are good for a calendar year.
I guess my second question, Joe, you've been fingerprinted, so you'd have to be fingerprinted annually?
This
$50 fee? If it's $50?
Well, but right now, the statute for, for Mr. Dede's scenario being an ice cream truck vendor, that's, there's an actual statute, Mass General Law, that covers him specifically. So so it wouldn't matter, so we wouldn't even have a say in it. So for the recent application that we had before attempted to go for us, we couldn't even process it because we don't have this in place.
I don't, Russ, I think your fingerprints don't change. I think that's a one-time shot. And so if you've had them done and they're on file, you're done. It would be the renewal of the permit and potentially a renewal of the quarry check because that could change, right?
Well, I believe though for a civil processing, because the applicant is giving permission to run a background check on them, it may require a second set of fingerprints, which are done electronically here. Well, it just, I have to look into it a little more, but for you to do the background check, okay, the quarry background check, I believe the requirement is a set of fingerprints. So so any ice cream vendor, regardless of, you know, if the town, you know, maybe does or doesn't agree every year, they don't really have a choice because the general laws already require that. It's very specific to the ice cream truck vendor. The other, other communities may not do as many as the Brooklines, such as, you know, solicitors or marijuana dispensary individuals. They are certainly registered and get their licenses through the state, who deem them appropriate to hold a license. So you don't have to have everybody that's on here. This just, what really got this going was our liquor licensees that come from out of state, applying for, applying for licenses, and we were able to get a thorough background check for them. So that kind of, everything just kind of morphed from there.
That's correct, Bob, because as Bob just mentioned, there's about seven to 10 categories where you could have this done and the ice cream truck vendor brought the issue up. Liquor licensees are important, obviously marijuana dispensaries and others, but you may not think it's as important for hawkers and peddlers, solicitors and canvassers, second hand vehicles. I mean, you know, we have, what, 20 second-hand vehicle dealerships? I don't really think you were looking for them to be fingerprinted. So you'd really have to look at the list to see which categories of occupational licenses you want to remain on there before Town Council drafts the bylaw.
Well, I mean, again, I certainly will give input to that. It all, I guess, determines on what the board deems that, you know, what particular applicant to go through this process, because right now we have nothing. Right? We know the ice cream truck is a must or you just can't issue the permit.
Yep.
Liquor licenses are what really brought this to the forefront to begin with, which I think is important myself.
I agree with you on that. They should be done, the marijuana ones too.
Yep, and we
They don't have to be done as a matter of statute in, under the state law for marijuana?
But what they do is they do apply to the state and the state already approves them and deems them suitable. So I would personally, I think I'd be satisfied with that process.
In other words, Bob, since the state's already doing that one, we wouldn't have to do it under ours.
That's the way I, that's the way I see it.
Yeah. So as you can see, gentlemen, you know, if you okay this bylaw to be developed, Bob can work with Ben to determine, you know, which ones of these categories really need to have those quarry-based fingerprint checks, because this language on this one says, it says "shall be." So you want to really make sure you figure out what universe of people you want that to happen to. And if you've got certain categories that don't need it, then you don't really need to put them in the list of occupational licenses.
And I think what helps with this too is going with a fairly, you know, strict policy. As some of these solicitors and vendors, canvassers that we see that come in our communities quite frequently, the background of such individuals, we have no idea who they are. So these, generally the people that are going to be coming and applying for these permits, hopefully they're going to be much more suitable candidates to be canvassing our town.
So
There are individuals that are from out west. And these big companies scoop them up and relocate them and they go around soliciting.
Correct. Carl, when we hire, do we ever do a quarry on town employees?
Yes, we do. We have, there are many different categories where we end up doing that. That's under a different law. We have authorized staff in our office who can fill out those forms with those individuals and submit it to the appropriate state agencies for answers back.
Correct, so
Is it deep though? Do we go deeper? Is it just
My question is, do you have to fingerprint them?
No, we don't.
That was my question.
See, I don't know that you're getting a out-of-state background check. And this was something we were hoping to be able to apply to our new application process here at the police department for our candidates.
I think it's a good idea. I just, I don't know if you need to get, maybe we just need to get clarity if you need to get re-fingerprinted every year in order to keep, to re-request the new quarry if your fingerprints are already on file, because maybe I'm, maybe I'm misremembering, but I thought that your fingerprints don't change.
Well, they do if you get, if you have a finger if you cut your finger off, you burn it bad enough, there are, you know, a bad scar becomes a set, a part of your fingerprint. So technically, yes, they
It's a daily occurrence at the move.
I'm just saying, I'm saying from the point of if you're gonna, because to Russ's point, he's asking if this represents an unreasonable, another tax, if you will, on on a business owner that's trying to run a ice cream, well, ice cream truck has to do it anyway, but a bar owner or something else, you know, another $50 fee and another hour or two out of your, you know, your workday a year to go and get fingerprinted and have to resubmit as opposed to just writing a check, another check for
I would feel that the same individual, especially when you're talking about managers or alternate managers of bars, if it's the same applicant from the previous year, I would say probably not, but certainly if they have a change of managers, we want to be able to do this. So we still have to adopt this procedure and we can certainly
I do.
Well, I also think that there, well, I don't think that there, I think there is benefits to occasionally renewing it and getting a quarry check, because, you know, someone's quarry could change even though their job didn't change too, right? So that, that's kind of important, whether they're the manager or, or whatever, but they're suddenly, their quarry's very different than it was. We may not, they may no longer be suitable to be that.
But that being said, Mr. Chairman, the fingerprints are what's required by the state to do it. So it's going to, so I can look a little deeper as far as the, running the second background, but if their policy is we need to have a second set of prints, then that's
Understood. So can you, can you come back to us with that? As far as, I mean, I'm not opposed to the rest of it. I'll pull the, pull the other, my compadres here, just to make sure we're all on the same page, but I was trying to make it as, you know, not as burdensome as
I do
the Commonwealth of Brookline does.
I do a quarry check on managers and everybody on the corporation LLC or LLP when they initially take out the license. And I do know what people involved in class one, two, or three licenses.
Right, but we don't fingerprint anybody right now.
Right, but the
And I think what lieutenant is saying is that it's a wider scope than just Massachusetts.
Correct.
Right, so I understand, so I understand that, Mike. So the question just becomes, do you have to redo the fingerprints in order to resubmit them again? Or can they just refer to the ones they already have on file to rerun a quarry or a wider, whatever it's called, a wider search?
Yeah, I can get back to you on that.
Please. And you don't have to wait for, you know, it can be whenever. Just let us know through Carl. You don't have to wait for another meeting on this.
So you don't want, okay, so, so is that going to influence your decision on authorizing him to work with council on this draft bylaw or?
Well, I want to, I want to hear from Russell and Joseph on this issue. Because I, Russ is concerned about the fees and costs and the impact there.
Right. I, I understand the intent and I think it's a great intent. And I know where we're headed on this. It's to protect the citizens of the town of Southwick. But I'm very concerned about the cost involved of people that we know who are in good standing in our community, have been part of the community for many years, and we're going to subject them to fingerprinting on an annual basis and collecting another fee, you know?
Only, only if you deem those licenses need this to go through this process, because right now, currently, they don't. You know, so if you want to go from this lift to what's of most importance to me, what came to light was because we had nothing for the liquor licenses, we had applicants that were applying from out of state, we knew nothing about them, we had no access to these records. So I thought that was a priority. Again, ice cream truck vendors, either we don't issue the licenses at all or that individual goes to another community to have that license issued. So we need to have something in place and it can be as broad or as narrow as you so choose. And I say, I guess, so what I'm just looking for is, you know, the approval of a process and we can work and scope this to fit what you're comfortable with as far as who needs to go through this application process.
Right, and it may only be two other 10 categories on this list.
Correct.
Then, then I would suggest we go forward, but I, I'd like to keep everybody in the loop, you know, so that we don't go too far down the road.
Joseph?
Well, I won't talk about ice cream, that's for goddamn sure.
But that's at a state level, so that ship has
Yeah, that ship has definitely sailed.
Sailed.
But, but I agree with Russ. I mean, and all I was going to say is you're hawkers and peddlers. I mean, if they were local Southwick citizens in a good standing, so your chief would know if they were or weren't, I agree with Russ that some of this doesn't have to jump through all those, but I'm all for the alcohol for sure. I mean, we had some great people that have applied for licenses recently and there's nothing wrong with them, but I believe one was from out of the country, right? And we, it took a while to get some verbiage back and stuff, you know, done the right way. So you're right, that does clean up some of our messes with our liquor deals. And then we know everyone's good and that's a great thing to have. But Russ, you're right, some of them, you're right, we can probably pull out of here. But I get it, Russ, you know, it's all good. But yeah, I think you gotta move forward with something for sure. That's all I got.
Lieutenant Landis, I'm under the understanding that you can't do quarries unless they're
I can't, I can't, you can.
I can only do Mass though.
Yes, correct. And you get a limited version. There's some information that may not be there that you'll get in a thorough background. So this just gives us again, our ability to see a little more with regards to our applicant outside of Massachusetts.
Right, and I, and I did do this once, guys, back with Riccardi, when my truck was going around the streets in town, we did that for one summer, and we went through this process. There's more because you just don't know who's driving that truck between the pedophile with the pot dealers and everything else. And they kind of hang out in those ice cream trucks in other communities, not so much in Southwick. Since then, we just do events with it, so we haven't really run this gamut because it doesn't go up and down the public streets, it's just events. For clarification. So when you hear the goddamn bell, it's not me.
So lieutenant, you, you have direction, you think, to, to proceed?
I do, I do. And certainly, once it's, a draft is put together, you, we can work down and narrow who you feel would be fitting to come, you know, go through this process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So 6:40, we have a, this is another public hearing, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
This is the Select Board acting as the liquor licensing authority. And notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Justin Scott Waterman, Scudieri, Inc., DBA Krabby Joe's Bar and Grill at 141 Congamon Road, Southwick, Mass, previously owned by 141 Associates LLC, manager of record Mark O'Neil, manager, has applied for a change in manager. Property description, building consists of first floor, five rooms, cellar is one room with a bar extending the dining room area, 600 square feet in the back, which includes three decks and one terrace. Alterations of premises to increased serving area from 10,427 square feet to 11,714 square feet in the former boathouse. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from 141 Associates to Scudieri, Inc., and approved new manager, Justin Scott Waterman, established entertainment license, establish and maintain same serving hours as previous licensee. Time and date of hearing, September 29th, 2020 at 6:40 PM, or close enough, via Zoom by the Select Board acting as the License Commission, Doug Mogul, Chairman, Russell Fox, Vice Chairman, Joe Dede, select person, that's not correct. Got our titles all mixed up, but okay. And Cindy, there was a process that you sent late in the day, correct?
Yes.
First thing was to open the hearing, so we need a motion to open the hearing.
Just remove.
Actual second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Thank you for going slow enough for me to locate that document. Is there any other paperwork that needs to be read into the record here? Cindy?
No. Nope, we're all good.
Okay, is there anyone from the applicant that wants to speak to this application? Mr. Scudieri?
No, I'm good.
No, you're representing, you're representing nephew.
Is Mr. Waterman here?
Yeah, where, where is the manager?
Mr. Waterman at schoolwork tonight. I called Cindy earlier and I told her he won't be able to make it.
Did you contact your lawyer?
I did send them an email. But as president of the company, you know, I'm representing my nephew.
Well, this, it's my understanding this location is not going to open anyway. You confirm that, Mr. Scudieri, that this restaurant will not be opening? It's just gonna, this is just a paper change back from Mr. O'Neil based upon an earlier request in that you're going to be keeping it closed and pursuing a sale?
We are, we have somebody on, on, right now, I have somebody that's going, willing to buy it and we are in the process of signing the contracts.
And, and in the meantime, it's not going to be, the facility's not going to be opened up?
Correct.
Okay, so this is just a paper change for right now. Just to accommodate Mr. O'Neil leaving the deal and Joe's ability to sell it to another, another buyer.
Any other questions of the applicant? Or his representative?
No, this, I think this was brought up a month or two ago. Joe's, the other deal fell through and we just have to get it back, the paperwork back into Joe's corporation's hands somewhat until the new owner can be secured and then start this process all over again for the new one.
Right, there'll be a new owner coming in front of us for the actual transfer to be able to open it.
Right.
Okay.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the change of manager? If, if so, please state your name and address. Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak against the change in manager? Again, if you could please state your name and address. Again, seeing none. Is there any other further discussion regarding this change of manager necessary at this time?
Only question I have, so if Joe ends up deciding to open it, will they have to come back in front of us at all as far as hours go or unless there's, unless there's no changes to the building, he should be all set, right? Or unless there's, unless there's no changes to the building, he should be all set, right?
He'd have to get all his inspections done and everything.
Right, okay.
But he wouldn't have to come in front of us the way I read the license hearing. He could just, he said, he said tonight that he's not going to open, but and I don't doubt Mr. Scudieri for a moment. I'll take him at his word. But the way I read this is hours are the same as before. It would be within the purview of this board. Well, the problem is if he's gonna transfer this license-
Right.
And we, let's say we put a restriction on hours just for the purpose of enforcing what Mr. Scudieri just said, then we'd have to go back and change them again when you had a new man, a new application for a license in front of you or a license transfer. So I don't know if this is even the proper format to do this. This is only the change of manager, not change of the license.
He would've had to apply for a change in hours.
Well- Yeah, but as the liquor commissioner, you could impose change in hours as the liquor commissioners too. He, we could restrict them further. But I, I'm taking Mr. Scudieri at his word and what he's saying is it's not gonna open. This is a procedural thing right now. But to your point, Joe, yeah, he could if he wanted to.
Yeah, and I just brought it up because I believe we had a meeting a while back. And of course, after that meeting was over, some people were a little confused thinking they could just open up, even though that wasn't the case. That's why I brought it up. I'm not against this one bit. I just want a clarification so we're all on the same page. Should three weeks from now, we have another discussion? That's all. I, I'm sure Joe's not opening and Joe's selling and I'm 100% on board.
Well, let's put it this way. If the sale doesn't work through, we'll open it up in the spring. Keep the license active.
Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
Thoughts?
So if I heard correctly, you said if the sale doesn't go through, you'd be opening up in the spring?
Correct.
Well, he's still gonna have to renew the license, so we'd have to address it at that point, at the time.
The license will be renewed in December to keep it renewed.
Mm-hmm.
So there will be a license that's in place. And the only thing I would need to open back up would be all my inspections.
Right.
Correct.
No, I mean, as long as, you know, you had the proper managers and everybody in place, um-
Well, the managers would need all the training that's approved by the police-
Right, the tips and everything.
So there's a lot more steps to being able to reopen.
Right, right.
Joe's aware of that.
Whatever necessary steps need to be taken, we will be taking them.
Right. Understood. Hopefully, Joe, you get a sale and then you can relax a little more.
Thank you. That's the game plan.
Good.
Mr. Fox?
I, I see no issue whatsoever, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scudieri is a longtime member of the community. He's always worked with this board over the years, so I have no problems at all. And I would even make a motion to close the hearing.
Joe Didi will second that.
Very well. Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And now we'd need a motion to grant the change of manager, um, to Justin Scott Waterman.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Good luck, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Scudieri.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on, we have payables warrant 2108B dated 9/21 and the amount of $444,941.15. And a payroll warrant number 2107 dated 9/29 today in the amount of $219,119.10. And I need a motion for the open session minutes for 9/15/2020.
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Discussion items. Discuss chief recommendations on process for SPD hirings. Hello, Chief.
Hello, sir, I'm back.
You're gonna have to talk for a second and then your voice will come in like it did in the last meeting.
Okay, we shall try to approve that. Hopefully, it'll be later than I submitted to Carl. And also the paperwork that shows the new standards for recruits going into the academy. My suggestion is just going to be that the very first step we put in our process for a full-time patrol officer would be that they take the actual test that we could, uh, we could, uh, you know, present it ourselves, take the test to see if the person's going to meet the standard for the academy. What's happening is departments are putting in, uh, you know, in one department, I know they put in 11 officers and only seven made the test. So now the academy starts. They only had seven recruits going into the class, which leaves them short, you know, for another year before they get people in there. So-
Fitness test.
Yeah. Yeah, we still have the, we still have the PAT test is where they have to go to a state facility and do the PAT test, which was always a standard. And then they also have to have their, their physical. Those are the standards set by the, uh, uh, Human Resource Division of, of the state. The academy itself has imposed these things because they were seeing quite a few people start at the academy. And within two weeks, they were, they're, they weren't making it. So they put this into effect. And part of the thing from the academy is that they're actually import, you know, asking police chiefs and towns to make it part of their hiring process. So I'm just trying to follow a lead on it because I think it is something we should do. Uh, because the thing is, if we, if the person doesn't pass it, the next person that could, we could put a secondary person in there, but it's only two weeks before the academy starts. So it has to try to get uniforms bought and everything for someone two weeks prior to going into the academy. If we had to go with our secondary person. And if that person doesn't make it, then we've got nobody going into the academy at that point in time. From the MPTC, the Mass Police Training Council, ideally, departments will conduct assessment utilizing these four events during their respective hiring process and use results to inform conditional offers of employment. So this would just be the first test. If we have three of them that, that passed the test, they would then still be going through the whole interview process or whatever the board decides would be the next step, which is usually interviewing by command staff, then by the board, then the actual, uh, offer of, you know, of employment, contingent on the physical and, uh, other aspects of it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is something that's very important cause this is part of that process of making sure that when, uh, the chief retires next year, that we have recruited the new net body to replace them as we have done with the last several chiefs who have left. So this has been a, a very positive thing that the board has done to keep up staffing levels.
Understood.
And the thing that I'm just trying to point out also is that right now, Lieutenant, I even check in the internet every day as far as trying to find out when the next academy class is. The only thing we're getting is possibly, uh, January into February when the next academy class would begin. So if we're gonna do this test, um, you know, I, I don't know, once the winter months come up, we would have to find a facility to do this inside unless we'd look at some time of, like the end of November before the, you know, the, the snowstorms come in. Um, I sent an email out to all the, the reserves saying that this is something that was going to be discussed. I gave them the same exact copies of, uh, that I presented to you so they know what the standards, you know, are. Um, so, you know, they, if they're, they're very interested in this position coming down the road, you know, they, they could already be training to this extent to make sure they're ready for that test whenever we, uh, if you go with it and whenever we present it to them.
Um, is there a willingness, Mr. Chairman, by the board members to authorize the chief to go through with this, this new standard for fitness so that he could then produce a pool of candidates for you to interview in the next month or two?
I have no objection. Russ, Joe?
Just, I think it's a great idea, Chief. My, my question is, what's, what's the additional cost to the town?
Nothing, sir. It would be, I myself, when I was discussing with Lieutenant- But we have a gentleman that's very physically fit in our department is, uh, I mean, Officer Malone. I think we'd involve him in being, being part of the testing procedure. Um, I think myself and Lieutenant would probably be present also. So everything's above board. So we have two, three sets of eyes on clocks, on, you know, tickers. So it's all, you know, all squared away and, uh, you know, done. So I don't see any additional cost. We just want to test ourself, you know, in our school system, at the track or at the station, and, uh, nothing, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be a great idea to, uh, follow up on what our chief administrative officer suggested.
No fingerprints required for this one.
Well, only if there's $50. I kinda think those have already been done years-
I was looking at this chart and I was wondering if I could actually do it. Cause in our age bracket, the number of pushups and, and situps goes way down. You know, it's only 10, 10 pushups, but, um-
Hey, where's the swimming requirement?
No swimming. Uh, Chief, you could only have to do eight.
I think I'm for it. As long as, uh, your first test, you could have Mr. Mogul do it solo before you have the cadets that you're thinking about do it. Um, I think it'd be a great thing for Mugsy. He would really enjoy that.
Yeah.
Is that a motivator, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Joe and I will be there.
I didn't see the bus, but yeah, I'll do it.
Yeah, you gotta do the finger, with, you had to get fingerprints for the ice cream truck. You might as well do 10 pushups. I, I'm more worried about the mile and a half, frankly speaking. I got 16 minutes to get that done. And it's a seven-minute mile for a 20 to 29-year-old, 13, 16, you know? Uh, eight-minute mile. So there you go.
So I got 16 minutes? All right, I'll work on that.
Can we make sure the paramedics are on, not, you know, we'll do it during the day shift, all right? I think it's a good idea, Chief. It, it seems like you, it would be a problem you could run into with, you know, if someone goes and then, you know, we, the best laid plans, then you send someone and they fail the PAT in the first week and all your hard work leading up to it is by the board, right? I get it.
You're gonna be very limited of how many they're taking anyway, so you gotta be spot on now. You, you don't have any room for error.
Correct.
They're only accepting 24 at this point in time. So it's gonna be a big push by many departments to try and get their, uh, best candidates in, in that seat.
Okay, so is the board gonna adopt that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Um, do you need one? As a police commissioner, as you mean, to make that a motion to send it forward or?
Yeah, to authorize that is the first step of the hiring process for, uh, by the police commission for the chief to go and implement it.
Um, sure. Joe, you wanna make a motion?
Sure. Joe makes the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Uh, roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Maybe we can have Brett do it with us too since he's on. Maybe he would like that.
Yeah.
Brett, you know.
Sergeant Banish is on the line.
Yeah, I think he'd be right in there with us, you know.
Fantastic.
He's kinda busy as the LEPC chairman, so-
Oh, you'll find time. You'll find, it'll be fine.
SPD Reserve and Auxiliary Officer Policy Revisions. And who's the issuer of this? Chief, this is your policy. You're muted.
Yes, sir. Again, this was created and presented by the lieutenant, uh, put this whole package together. So I'm gonna defer questions and comments to him at this point in time. Lieutenant?
So as we're moving forward with, uh, expanding on the auxiliary unit for day-to-day input, we needed to include them into our policies and procedures cause, uh, prior to this, it only addressed the reserve officers. So, um, the document that you have just incorporates that into what was our, our service policy. And so we're just looking for really the, uh, if you've read through it and you find it, you know, suitable, um, again, everything as it relates to auxiliary officers comes under civil defense. They are not sworn officers or activated by the chief of police and only have police powers, um, upon being activated. Uh, unlike our reserve officers, there's, there's definitely a difference there. So that is all addressed within the policy as well.
Mr. Chairman, this is also consistent with the, uh, reorganization vote you took a few weeks ago that Town Council had worded on the auxiliary police and firemen function under that Civil Defense Act that you had a meeting with Charlie about. So this is, this is another step in carrying that issue out.
I, you beat me to it. So you need a motion to adopt this policy or do you want? And it's up to the other, I did read this, but I don't know if my compadres here wanna take this under advisement for a week or are prepared to move on this.
We, we had it at our last meeting and we already did take it under advisement.
So there you go. Then I need a motion, Mr. Didi.
Mr. Didi will make that motion.
Mr. Fox will second it.
Uh, Doug Mogul, aye?
Mr. Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
So that's adopted.
I happen to be a police detective.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot of work. Thank you. It really was.
What we got here?
Letter of understanding, review and renewal.
Right, that's for the Lieutenant, uh, letter of understanding that, uh, you and I took care of, uh, Mr. Chairman. And this is just your vote to, um, authorize that to be executed by the board.
So I need a motion for that, please.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Is there no second? If there's no second, I will second them. You okay, Russ?
I, I thought I said that.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Sorry. There, there was nothing. I apologize. So wanna do it over?
Russ Fox will second.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Uh, Doug Mogul, aye?
Aye, aye, aye. Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
That was the worst time ever for an audio glitch. And it wasn't just me. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Good, cause now we'll get to the appointments. So this is for July 1st?
Yep.
We don't need to read all these, do we?
Nope, you can just say as submitted by the chief.
As submitted by the chief. Cause Olive's getting, is that Olive that's getting a little upset in the background?
Olive is upset.
Olive is upset because the Yankee game is starting and we're running along. Anyway, um-
Isn't there a debate tonight too at some point?
Eh, I can tape that one. So we have a list of, uh, submitted by the police chief for the police department for reappointment. Did we, did we not do this earlier, Carl?
Uh, no, it was, uh, determined that it hadn't been done.
Okay. And the only significant change from as submitted is that one of the officers now has a new last name.
Right.
Joseph?
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Carried unanimously. Uh, next is the part-time emergency management director job description. This had been sent to Labor Council for review and edits and so on and so forth, correct?
Oh, yeah. It was developed by Labor Council and Town Council. And it was consistent with, uh, also to incorporate the reorganization vote that you took a few weeks ago. It was provided to both chiefs. They gave their input. It was provided to Charlie. He was okay with it. So it is now before you, uh, for the second meeting for you to adopt it.
We need a motion to approve, please.
Joe Didi will make that motion to approve.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And we need to approve amended town owner agreement for 15 Matthews Road. And this is to, uh, ratify a signature of the chair from 9/23.
Need a motion?
Please.
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And approve the fiscal year 21 IAFF Local 4919 contract. Um, I think we've already ratified, we just need to ratify it. It's one that we had already agreed to and-
Signed off, yep.
And signed off. So we need to just ratify an open session. Joseph?
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Approve 61A First Writer Refusal Document for 275 Grand- Approve 61A First Write of Refusal Document for 275 Granville Road. I see this is gone. The agcom says nay-nay. Get it? And the concom also deferred. I didn't see anything from planning, but I'm assuming they're in the same board.
Yes, Alan, yes, uh, the planning board has no interest. Alan, um, conveyed that to me, um, last week after their meeting.
Perfect. So then we just need to, since we have our list of preferred properties, this wasn't on it, and then we even went through the other boards for their opinions and thoughts and came back with negative. So, uh, I need a motion to, um, release our right of first refusal for 275 Granville Road.
Joe DeeDee will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mowgli, aye?
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, you'll be getting another one of these in the future for another parcel right next to it on Granville Road.
Can't wait. Um, we have, uh, our DPW engineer is on FMLA for up to three months and we have a request here from Randall Brown, the DPW Director, um, to have some backfill for that role, uh, for some of what Mr. Grinnell's does. Um, and he's proposing that John Goddard fill in that role, um, as he's familiar with many of Dick's current job responsibilities. Discussion or a motion?
I still can't believe John Goddard, John works for the county. What a, what a great, what a great catch. Um, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mowgli, aye?
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we lucked out. So we have, uh, fiscal year 19 PVP C invoice number six for ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-six cents, uh, for administrative services. And they are detailed in the warrant number six and et cetera. That's included here.
Joe DeeDee will make the motion for number four, number six.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mowgli, aye?
Joe DeeDee, aye.
And signatures on warrant for 2020 state election. Carl, we just need to sign all those? Come in and sign them off?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. That's the one for, you know, president and vice president and, and, uh, you know, congressman and the state senate, state rep, uh, those types of positions, those, as well as the ballot questions. So...
Do we need a motion or we just gotta sign them at our leisure?
Um, you should, you, you know, it would, just take a motion and, um, make one and make it unanimous and then come by and sign it. There'll be a whole host of documents that you have to sign up from tonight anyway on your other votes.
So if we don't vote on this, the entire presidential election doesn't happen. Then cancel the debate tonight and everything. That's awesome. Just kidding. Joe, you wanna make a motion?
I don't know. Maybe I'm a question box. You can't hear me. I don't know.
It's a heavy, heavy responsibility.
I don't know.
The nation's fate rides in the balance.
Joe DeeDee will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mowgli, aye?
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay, Select Board schedule for October to January. I guess traditionally we start to meet again every week starting in October, which...
When is the biggie's over?
Golly, it's already October. Now that the biggie's over and every, oh, wait.
Yep, Ross, aye.
Yeah, and obviously on that schedule, you might just wanna double check, um, you know, some of those dates to, um, you have the election coming up, so you might wanna take that November second and third week off and then the next week is, uh, that Tuesday is the 10th and that's the night before an actual holiday. Veterans Day actually falls on that Wednesday, so you might wanna meet that Monday.
You mean the 9th instead of the 10th?
Yeah, yep, and, and not meet the week of the 2nd and the 3rd because of the presidential election.
I have no objection to that meeting on the 3rd of November. Gentlemen?
November 3rd, no.
But does anyone have a problem meeting on the eve of Veterans Day? Is there something I'm missing?
No.
Am I missing a memo here? I, I don't know. It seems like that would be okay. Uh, and then, uh, December...
Meeting on the 10th.
I would think, unless I hear some other convincing argument. And then the December, shall we not meet the, either we, should we meet the 22nd or the 29th or not meet on the 29th? What is the tradition?
Normally, Mr. Chairman, we do not meet the week of, uh, Christmas.
Okay. Christmas is a Friday this year, so, so New Year's Eve is Thursday. So we could not, what do you do the week after Christmas? Do you meet the last day of the, the, the week of, the last week of the year? So the 29th, or we would not meet for those two weeks?
I, I think we've usually squeezed in something even if it's just a short meeting.
Okay, so we will not meet December 22nd. We will meet briefly on the 29th.
And I'd also, Mr. Chairman, if we could look at the week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, good point. That's usually on a Thursday. Well, you know, it's on a Thursday this year too.
And we normally do not meet that week, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. No meeting, well, that would mean we're gonna meet, not meet on the 3rd, meet on the 10th, 17th, not the 24th. Perfect.
What about, uh, Columbus Day? Meet on the 13th?
Yeah, we'll meet on the 13th. Columbus Day's a Monday, right?
Right, it's a regular Tuesday. There's no issue with that day.
My bank might be closed, but, you know...
The bank will be closed on Monday.
Yeah, well, who knows?
Oh, no, well, my former bank changed the name of the holiday. It is now my former bank.
And that way.
Well, you gotta vote with your wallet, right?
No, absolutely.
There you go. Reevaluation of IMA status.
Uh, that's an issue where the, that, that relates to the agreement you have for electrical inspections and, um...
What's up with that?
Well, the, uh, the building inspector says there's, you know, there's a lot of demand for that service both here and, uh, it, up in Westfield. So Russ had a, um, a discussion with the mayor and they're in the process of, because of their backlog and their demands, they're, they're looking at hiring a third person. So it might make sense for us to, uh, reevaluate that agreement and give the proper notice under it and then pursue, uh, our own options to retain two per diem part-timers. And, uh, because the building inspector knows that we have people out there that could do this, so it makes sense to, to, to do that. I know, Russ, do you wanna speak to anything, um, anything to...
I did speak to our good friend, uh, Mayor Humison, and, uh, after that discussion, uh, obviously, uh, Westfield needs to take care of their residents first and, and there is a backlog. Uh, they're even getting complaints up there. Uh, so obviously our complaints down here are gonna increase. So I think in, in the short run, this is a good way of going. It's, it's not to say in the future we couldn't go back and reinstitute the policy, but I think in the short run, I think this would be a good idea, particularly when we see some of the new growth going on in town. Um, I, I think we have some qualified people that we can use.
So what is the required notice under the existing, I had it in front of me and now I can't find it. What is the, uh, required notice under that existing policy there, Carl?
Uh, it's, it's ninety days. So if you're so inclined, we could, you know, give the notice to dawn tomorrow and then at least we would then be able to bring the other ones on and, and start to, to catch up.
Are we gonna post for that position? Or has it already been chosen?
No, no. He's gonna, he's going to, um, seek candidates.
Okay.
No objection.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so, um, any other new business?
I'm gonna get a motion on that.
Do you need one?
Joe DeeDee will make the motion to...
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mowgli, aye?
Aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, under new business, we also just wanna let you know, we, we've got some, uh, town hall roofing issue repairs that we're gonna be making within the next week or two, because when we had some of those storms, uh, we had to go up and replace some shingles, some issues, and then we found an issue with some of the decking in the front of the building above your conference room. So, uh, that's already been, um, the paperwork's already in process and we have a vendor coming to address replacement of those decking sections and some shingles so that we can make sure that the building will be watertight for the winter.
Any other new business from you, Carl?
No.
Joseph?
I have something where I think it falls under old business.
Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Old business. Uh, the conservation thing's on hold. We're waiting for a hearing date for South Lake Hill Road. Uh, water commissioner vacancy. We have some applications or some interested folk. So can we schedule something for, probably not next meeting, but the meeting after to have the water commissioners join us?
Yep, so that'd be for the 13th then.
And then just post, you know, we, we'd have a joint meeting of both boards to appoint a successor, a person to fill Luther. It's not, no one could be a successor to Luther, but to fill his seat until the next election.
Right. Cindy will coordinate that with, with Christie to make sure that the agenda's appropriately, appropriately written and posted for that joint meeting, sir.
Ad-hoc cable advisory. Did we get our, um, did we draft the finance committee folks for that?
I believe they were. Um, Mr. Horacek is inclined to, uh, join the committee again and I believe he was going to, uh, bring the issue up with his, uh, board members last evening. I'm just not sure if they were able to do that because their, their meeting schedule, the timing might have been a little short for that meeting.
Thank you. Uh, green energy still on hold. High-speed internet, we have, they have not met again yet. Any other old business?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, in following up on the ADA plan report that we went over this past summer in June with Jim Maisick, who had prepared it on behalf of the town, uh, based upon a grant that we got from the state, we started to examine the report and chip away at things. So, uh, some of the plan recommendations centered on, um, changing some of the signage in municipal buildings as well as, uh, installing the correct types of drinking fountains or water fountains that you would call them, uh, in terms of compliance. So today, um, we submitted a thirty-three-thousand-dollar grant to the State Mass Office of Disability. So, um, that got taken care of. And then the other issue is on the American and bankruptcy hearing. That's gonna be held tomorrow in front of the federal judge related to the sale to a qualified bidder. So I will be sitting in on that proceeding tomorrow and monitoring it to, uh, see how the town is going to do with the, um, you know, a new buyer taking over and then meeting their responsibility for the issues that the town has as a secured creditor.
There's been some discussion at the last planning board meeting that certain interested parties were interested in changing the use of that facility as well going forward. So it'd be interesting to see what comes out of that. So is this will be a finalization of the sale at the, at this hearing tomorrow?
Um, I'm not sure if it's a finalization, but it's, it's, it's a step further along in the process and hopefully we'll, we'll, within the next month or so, we'll have a better idea on where we stand on, on what we need to address, uh, from a town on, um, recovering the monies owed to the town.
Understood. Okay, any other old business, Carl?
Not for me, sir.
Mr. DeeDee?
Um, the monument at the Green in the center of town. And, uh, the third one that's finally going up. They were a little short on their fundraising capabilities. The family did not realize that the base wasn't the community that goes into the ground. So very lucky that, uh, I shouldn't say lucky, Randy Brown and crew dug the hole for me. They had called me, tried me for it. Um, it's done. It's backfilled today before the rain came. And of course, they're a little shorthanded on funds. So I'm wondering if we can go to the selectmen's group account for a couple hundred bucks to, to help offset some of that. I have to go around and, uh, probably get up some other nonprofits in town and see if we can, to offset the money I'm sure to finish this project on schedule.
Mr. Fox, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
So you need a couple hundred bucks?
I'd love a couple hundred bucks.
Form of a motion, Mr. Fox?
I will make that in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I'll second it, I guess. Doug Mowgli, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
And I guess I'll abstain because I'm the guy in the middle again. But hopefully this is my last monument while I'm alive. That's what I'm hoping for, so.
The next monument won't be, will have your name on it, is what you're saying?
No, 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 no. No. Actually, it could though, couldn't it?
That's what I'm kinda saying, yeah. If you follow that through, yeah, sorry.
I did, sorry. I don't want a street named after me like Russ. I can tell you that, you know? Thanks, gentlemen.
Uh, no, I skipped this there and the other new business that I called out of order. Uh, SPD LT recruitment process. Um, are we premature with that? Are we ready to start that process?
I believe you wanted to address, um, the finalization of the incoming chief's contract in the future before you went to that, but that's your prerogative.
So can we carry that now under old business now that we've talked about it under new business? Because it's, it is a logical process that's gotta happen, right? So...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's the next domino, but we need to finalize the, uh, chief's con, incoming chief's contract, which would, once he accepts that, then that would...
Create the vacancy.
That we, that we should, that we're gonna fill, right? But it, it would be bad form to fill the vacancy before it's vacant.
Correct.
That'd be like losing at musical chairs. So, yeah.
Do you think that's weeks out or months out, Carl?
Um, I, you know, I, I would say it's, it's not months out, but it's, it's probably one to two months.
You wanna wait that long? One month?
Well, we're just, we're working on these other issues. So, I mean, tonight...
No, I got, I'm just, the baseball guy on, on the TV here showing me the number one, so.
And it's, it's the proper one, not the one that I usually get. One month, we'll get this done.
Okay, and if we don't in a month, we'll look at it and, and figure something.
We have other things in the queue. I mean, tonight...
I know, I know, Carl. I know.
We knocked out one of them tonight. We're gonna keep plugging away.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Any other business before the Select Board this evening? We didn't, Randy, you got anything for us tonight? We didn't hear from you at all.
No, I'm here. I'm just listening.
You're just listening?
I was just listening in case you had any questions. Yep.
Well, thank you for your help with the monument and the guys. Appreciate it.
They were great. They did a good job. That was nice.
Happy to do it.
Yeah. Helped out a lot.
Anyone else on the line have anything for the Select Board before we take a motion to adjourn? Okay, I'll take that motion to adjourn. Anyone?
Joe DeeDee will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mowgli, aye?
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.